I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Peoria Heights to order, please. If you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Trustee Hahn.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Dan Mariska.
Present.
Trustee Diane Mariska.
Present.
Trustee Ryan.
Present.
And Trustee Carter.
Okay, thank you. Is there any old business come forward to the Board tonight? Hearing none, we're going to get right into new business. So we're here tonight because we have a presentation on a proposed development here in Peoria Heights, a residential development. We're going to take questions and answers. We're going to have a presentation. I would ask everyone to please hold your questions until the appropriate time. We'll have plenty of time for comments and questions. So first is a presentation on the private redevelopment project. So welcome, Ms. Kim. And by the way, the Board isn't going to take any action tonight. We're going to get information and listen to your feedback and comments from the public.
Did I state my address? Name and address or no?
Name and address. Please.
Katie Kim at 1426 Samuel Avenue in Peoria Heights. All right. Summary of the project, I know we presented this to the Board before and for the inducement resolution. And what we're looking to do with our project is along Samuel Avenue, East Samuel Avenue, between Prospect and Constantine. So the two blocks between there, so between Prospect to Columbus and Columbus to Constantine is to, our Phase One and Phase Two is to acquire homes along that block. We have a good amount of homes under contract and/or purchased at this point in time. Our Phase, so the Phase One and Phase Two is to acquire and hold and continue them to be rental properties until we be such time where we enter into a Phase Three. Phase Three is to pre-sell those lots and basically some of the properties we would be taking them and dividing them down into other, smaller lots. Most of those properties that are two or three lots currently. So we'll get to that timeframe and dimensions. And then basically Phase Four is a construction of a single-family home on that lot. Couple of, and then the fifth phase, which is an adjustment from the last time we presented this project to you, is a multi-tenant building due to not being able to acquire one of the homes. We looked and also according to the feedback we received from some of our meetings, focus groups, some of the citizens that have come into our office since hearing about this project and asked what's going on to get more information more on it. And one of the feedback we got was that there is an aging population in the Heights and almost every single home has stairs. And so they were asking if we were going to do any flats, homes. And so with the opportunity with the topography and the area that we have, we decided to do a multi-tenant building. And so we would have an opportunity to fulfill that request in the community. So with that being said, we wanted to also let you know about some of the adjustments we've made as well, talking to some of the residents, talking to some of the people in our focus groups. Originally, we were going to do a 25-foot by 125-foot lot. And looking at some of the feedback on the size of lots that are currently there that we would not be able to acquire because the homeowner is not interested in selling, and looked and said their lots, or their house is on a 30-foot wide. And so we adjusted our plan to be more 30-foot-wide lots instead of 25, so it would really stay in line in symmetry with those houses that are choosing not to sell. So that is an adjustment we made. As I said before, the multi-tenant building with the stairs, that was a constant feedback that came back as well as having a master on the first floor for some of the homes. So those are just the, really the two adjustments that we've made since we brought this project forward before.
Okay. We'll pause just a minute. Does the Board have any questions, Ms. Kim, right now? Not comments, but just questions on the project?
So how many homes then would you be able to construct in this area?
Depending on how many we are able to put under contract. We have a certain amount right now, so I can tell you what we would be able to put under, what we'd be able to construct right now. We also have some individuals that have said that they were negotiating with us and so we're in talks with them right now. So it's kind of a, we know exactly what we can do right now to date and then what we are hoping to do. So we have a Scenario One and a Scenario Two.
So what can you do at this point?
At this point in time, we'd be able to do, at this point in time, we'd be able to do about 20 homes.
20?
20 homes.
Have you had any letters of intent up to this point or anything similar to that?
Letters of intent for people to purchase the properties?
Correct.
At this point in time, we're not taking the letters of intent. We do have a pre-sell list of about six individuals who are constantly calling us, to be honest, on updates of the project and what's happening. And that list continues to grow. We've had local employers that have reached out to us and have asked to meet with us to find out about the project because they see it as a great opportunity to attract key individuals and talent within their workforce. And we have had about three of those meetings and we have two more scheduled.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Trustee Hahn.
How many units of, you said something about an apartment building?
How many units would you be looking at?
You said that it's going to be ground floor? Will there be like an elevator in it or something?
There will be an elevator and that again to the population. We are looking to go four floors, which is what's within the current zoning that permits at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Four floors for, I mean, how many actual units? One per floor or?
No, there would be about three per floor, so it'd be about 12 units.
Anyone else?
How many square feet would they be?
We're actually still working on that floor plan right now. We're trying not to get too far ahead without confidence that we're going forward with it.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else? At this point, before you proceed, Katie, we're not ready for comments for or against this project, but if anyone in the audience has a specific question for Ms. Kim, please raise your hand and Katie will take your question. So anyone in the audience have a question?
My question is, when you said that there are 20 that you have planned for right now and you've got, how many homes would be coming down for those 20 to go up?
Less than 20.
I'm just trying to be specific with density.
It's not a two-for-one home. It's basically, a lot of the lots that are currently, the homes are on are already 30 by 25. So a lot of it's one-for-one. I think in the release we have, let me add up, we probably would have 12 homes coming down.
So you've got, you've got them on 12 homes and so you know you've got, and then whatever contracts on the floor.
We have contracts.
20 would be going up and place above. And then what is the average, whether rent or just guess, and then maybe we'll be far away, like three apartments and then like the homes, whatever.
Well, we were hoping at this point in time to know honestly what Larry was doing with his buildings in terms of pricing the market because he's really setting the standard for the rental market in the Heights in terms of the apartments. What we've done is based our projections off of what currently has gone online in the warehouse district in the last couple of years and put a little bit of a discount to it.
So I don't.
At this time, I'm not really ready to share rental rates because again, you need to know the whole square foot and design and everything, I doubt, on the multi-tenant building.
And then on the home, are you closer on that? What kind of price result would be?
The homes would be a design-build option for those owners. So that's where it's kind of hard to know what those home prices would be. We were shooting for $250,000 to $350,000 home. And so you'll see in any of the projections that you see we have done, we basically split it in the middle and did a $300,000 home for our numbers.
Go ahead, sir.
I have a question. On our homes that are coming down, how many of those homes are, I don't know, how many of those homes or round homes compared to the homes that are going to be built to be owned?
So, great question. Of all the homes we have under contract, one is owner-occupied. And I want to clarify that because one, additional one, is actually owner-occupied, but it's their second home. They actually live in Bloomington and then transit up here on the weekends, so.
The rest are rental?
The rest are rental.
Anything else, Dan?
Yes? So if you do 20 right now while you finish the whole project, as the apartment builds and things bring in, we're able to acquire as I knew the property system, I think you might be able to, so what would the total be at the end?
37.
Where are you thinking of locating the apartment building? Like we're at Samuel?
At Samuel, it would be if you're coming off of Prospect, Leaves and Beans is on your left, the Beaufort parking lot is on your right, then there's that alley that comes behind all the commercial. It would be on the southeast corner of the alley in Samuel. So it'd be right across from the current home that has the hair salon on the, or studio on the first floor and then the rentals, so.
So behind the Beaufort parking lot?
Yes.
And then what about, if you have any ideas for, like the style of the homes you're thinking of? I mean, there's a lot to kind of cut on that. Also in terms of, I think most of them, there's an alley behind it, I believe.
Correct.
So are there live ways of finding, how are you, so you have an idea of how you're going to design the homes because it would be very different and be actually very modern and tried to be in the planning council, is it?
Yes, and we have, we actually have floor plans, we have facades, we have those all drawn up and sketched up at this point in time. Again, it will all depend on what the owners design that buy that house, but we have a certain design criteria when we sell it. It'll be a certain material requirement. We are going for more of a urban feel with the homes. We are looking at having all the owner, I call it owner access, from the alley into the garage and then garage walk into the house. We are looking to keep some of the, keep some of the rich features, I think, that are in the Peoria Heights. There's a lot of front porches and in driving around, almost every house has a front porch and everybody really uses them, to be honest. I see a lot of people out sitting on their front porch and so that was a characteristic we wanted to keep. And so all these houses have, you know, a little bit of stairs up to the front and then the porch, whether it's a small porch, wide porch, again, there's some variations in that. But we are definitely going for more of that. Some people call them townhomes and then some people say, well, that townhome should be connected. And so these would be single-family homes, but it would have more of that urban feel to it. The access would be in the rear. I know next on the agenda, Steve is going to be talking about the public part of this, but part of what we wanted to do along with the project is in order to make this successful is to have some infrastructure improvements. And so using the TIF to help fund some of those. So redoing streets, putting sidewalks, lighting the sidewalks, those are some key factors that we have. We currently live on Samuel and when we went out for Halloween trick-or-treating with our boys, you know, we were carrying flashlights and tripping over the sidewalk a little bit. And so we want to make it a nice, safe, walkable area. Everything we love about the Heights and the downtown, the walkability of the Village, we want to really extend that into the residential areas.
Like if I wasn't just seeing the plans and the group allocation, is there a way for the public to see that right now?
Yep, yep, they can.
Your office or?
Yep, come in and sit in our office, yeah.
Alexis, go ahead.
I have a question, just a little bit for Katie but also for the Village. I don't know what appropriate time to ask the questions that everybody are. But my first one is, what is the current total generating tax base of your TIF district? How much of the whole lot that you want to tip out currently being taxed? Is the projected tax rate after that? Because when it's tipped, it's just what you do is, how many TIF districts have we given in the Heights?
Two.
Two so far?
Two.
Because?
Three, there's three total.
This will be the third.
Two or four.
Because my only theory is, and first of all, we're growing development and this is a great idea, but as you start freezing up these TIF blocks everywhere, that means you can't raise taxes. That means the only, any other, well, there's a lot of years that you can, that means that the tax burden will fall more heavily upon the people that are outside of that TIF district. So I just want to know like what the Village is going to be doing to the.
Mr. Klein, our TIF consultant's going to be making a presentation and I think that would be a question more appropriate for him unless you want to take a shot at it. Katie, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, and I'm shooting out the cuff. I did print out that exact paper to bring here and I think I just left it on the printer, but I printed the exact numbers for that. Off the cuff, right now, the current two blocks right now is assessed, and again, this is assessed value at 1.82, somewhere around there, 1.82 million. And your projections, if you use what we're looking at, would change it to potentially like a 12 to $11 million. And the other ripple effect of that, which a lot of people don't see and as you know, council's never taken into consideration, is if you increase owners living in an area that want the walkability, that they're going to walk down the street, they're going to spend money, they're going to go to restaurants, which is going to increase sales tax, which is going to help also the Village take care of other things.
Any other specific questions for Ms. Kim on the project? Okay, Katie, anything else you'd like to conclude with?
That's it, I'll just wait for other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would ask Public Works Director, Mr. Smith, if he would present the public redevelopment project agreement, public piece?
Well, yeah, concerning the public infrastructure, I think as Katie alluded to, I mean, the Village obviously would have to make some infrastructure improvements in that area. It's going to have to be a component of this project. Obviously, setting up a TIF district does provide some benefit to the developer for the agreement that the Village would work out. So the Village needs to, needs to be whole, I guess, in that negotiation as well. In the Village, if you folks are residents, I'm sure you know well by now that money is tight as far as roads and water improvements go. So we have worked up, these are not engineering-grade numbers, but they're kind of our best, closest estimates after working with our engineers of redoing all the streets, all the alleyways, curb, gutter, all the storms over, every manhole, every storm inlet, sidewalks, lighting, pretty much everything in the public right of way would be totally redone, brought up to a current standard in that area. It would be solely funded by the TIF district. Those cost estimates are in the range of 1.25 to 1.3 million dollars. So but for this project, but for the establishment of this TIF district, obviously this type of comprehensive infrastructure improvement in that area would not take place. So and I'm sure Mr. Klein, who's waiting in the wings here, will be touching on this more as to how the numbers actually work out. But again, it would be the Village taking essentially a bond to complete the construction. Money that accrues in the TIF district would be used to pay back that bond over a certain period of years.
And again, no, none of that money coming out of the Village's general fund, all being paid for by the TIF.
Correct, because yeah, currently that money is just not there in the Village's general fund.
Trustee Hahn, anything else on that infrastructure part?
I'm pretty sure that money from TIF One and TIF Three can go into any infrastructure improvements. There's two TIFs that are touching and if the TIFs are together, then money can be shared between the TIFs. It's important to say that money won't be, no one will be taxed, your property, your property taxes that are not in the TIF district will not be going to help pay for any improvements. The improvements being done will be paid for by the TIF district itself. I know Kyle said that, but it's.
It's a point worth reiterating.
Yes.
That's how it always works with this.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else? Mr. Klein, I think we're ready for you. So Steve Klein, our TIF consultant, is going to walk us through this proposed agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to use your steps here. It's got some material I'd like to use before here and we'll start.
Is that the pre-development agreement?
That is.
No, the one you had, because I copied that and handed that out already.
This is what I was waiting to do.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Sure got your app on it. While that material is being passed around, let me try to address gentleman's question in the front about the assessed valuation. Now, I don't have the assessed valuation for the particular parcels that are included in the. Are we referring to it as a Samuel Avenue project tonight? Is that what we're all generally referring to it as? But I can tell you that in the TIF area that's been proposed for TIF Three, that the total assessed valuation, and that's before exemptions for that area, is about 9.7 million. The Village overall has an assessed valuation of about 111 million. Okay, just to put that in perspective. The residential units that are within the present, the TIF District Three area that we're looking at, of that 9.7 million, about 3.6 million or so of it is accounted for by residential properties. And because there's commercial properties that are also included along Prospect makes up the rest of it. Okay, so does that help a little bit? And I think that.
Well, I guess, this is my question, but first of all, we're growing development. I want to say that again, we want to see this project happen. What my question is, how much forward thinking, I just want to make sure the Heights is doing proper forward thinking. When you start blocking off these TIF zone, the only people, if things don't go as planned and you guys need to raise more taxes, that can't be levied, the money, that can't be levied from the TIF zone because that's already an increment that's set. So as we, you say that money's tight in the Heights, I see the Heights investing in property, I see the Heights in being a business owner and anyways, and I wonder to myself, like block off and you increase development, which is great, you have to have development, it just has to be with a whole good neighborhood balance in mind. Because all I have seen here the past seven years is my taxes skyrocket up. Now it's a TIF here, it's a there, it's a there, that means no more increment there, no more increment there, no more increment there, but around, it's going up. So I just want to make sure that the Heights is thinking forward enough, definitely going and helping the development and making it happen and bringing more vibrancy to our area and citizens and businesses, fantastic. Just a lot and lot of the cost of everybody else, as it seems to have been, going in that direction, that's why.
Well, I appreciate your concerns, I do. And there will be a public hearing on February the 6th to discuss the TIF district overall and that will be part of that discussion. I'm really here tonight to address the particulars of this project for, which we're talking about for this special meeting. But I can, without the data here in front of me, I can anecdotally tell you that the reason why you may perceive your taxes have been going up is that the rates have probably changed and gone up over the last several years. Not just the Village rate, but your rates overall have probably increased because the tax base hasn't increased, the assessed value of the community hasn't risen enough to spread that out. And so the, one of the purposes for trying to undertake these economic development projects is to increase the overall tax base of the, of the community so that the tax dollars that are needed to provide, no, the property taxes that are needed to provide the public services that property taxes pay for can be charged against or levied against a bigger, a bigger scope of properties that are worth more than just taxing yours every year. So it spreads it out more. That's the whole, you know, a basic premise behind what the Village is trying to do is to increase the overall value of the whole community so that each one of you are actually taxed less or you're, the less of the, less of the burden is on each individual person rather than it being spread out over a larger tax base. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish by encouraging, what, the 19 or 20 million dollars of new development that's happened here in the last two or three years. That's.
Just for the record, I don't serve with anyone on this Board that is looking to raise property taxes in any way. The Village hasn't raised property taxes, I don't think, for a long time. And we take a very small bite of your property tax bill. The Village, we run the Village primarily on sales tax and that's, that's what pays for our police, our fire, our infrastructure, our public works primarily. Look at your tax bill, it's a very small amount what the Village Peoria Heights levies for.
3.6 cents.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, but we'll talk some more about that at the public hearing on, on February the 6th.
I understand.
I understand, right. But just keep in mind that the whole idea of tax increment financing is to encourage new development, investment to occur that would be reluctant or not be occurring without the help of TIF. And the way that tax increment financing works is such that it doesn't require the Village to increase taxes. That's the whole point of tax increment financing. But as the needs continue from year to year and the costs for those services have continued to increase and there's a limited amount of assessed value in the community to levy against, then everybody has to pay more in order to have those better services every year. So we're trying to, we're trying to make it so that there's a bigger, a bigger pie here for property tax purposes to try to spread that out and make it easier for everyone. So let me take a few minutes, if I may, to kind of give you an overview of the financial aspects. And I don't mean to turn my back on the audience, but I'm really, I'm needing to address the Board here because there are some, there's some key features of this project within the proposed terms of the redevelopment agreement that you need to understand. And so the memo that I passed around to you is kind of the Cliff Notes version of the draft pre-development agreement that we've provided to you tonight. Now, we can't overemphasize the word "draft" enough, okay? Because we've had a very, very short time this week to do a lot of work to try to be ready for this discussion tonight. So that is not a finished product. It will probably be finished up tomorrow and Monday pending your comments and direction that you give us tonight, okay? So we have some more work to do on it. There's typos, there's incomplete paragraphs, but the concepts are in there. And the concepts are largely patterned after agreements that you have already approved. So the language is not going to be foreign to you. The agreement that you approved for the Duryea apartment building is going to be very similar to this one with the exception of the guarantees or the safeguards that we're using in this instance for this deal as opposed to that one. And the safeguards are in place so as to make sure that the Village is not put at risk because the last thing that anyone wants is for the Village to ever have to raise taxes for a TIF project. And that's, that's the whole purpose of all of the detailed language and the complicated financial structuring that we have to try to work through here to make sure that that indeed is the case, that the Village is not at risk, okay? So I just, I want to emphasize that. emphasize that before we, you know, go any farther. So I've given you the, kind of the outline. This two-page memo sums up the, the essence of that redevelopment, pre-development agreement. And then the numbers that we need to also look at is on the projection that we've provided to you. So let me kind of go through and I'll hit the, the high points of this, and then I'll be happy to address questions. So, so as you've already heard this evening, a large part of the effort for this Samuel Avenue project, as it's been proposed, is that the developer is asking the village to undertake these public infrastructure improvements. Streets, stormwater, sidewalks, lighting, alley work, okay? It would primarily be the Samuel Avenue that is the portion between Prospect Road and Constantine, as well as the, perhaps the lateral portions of Columbus visit, and, and then the alleys that would be behind the first properties on both sides of Samuel. Okay? And as Mr. Smith had indicated earlier, the current estimate for that work is approximately $1.3 million to complete it. And we can talk about the reasons why that's necessary, why it has to be, be done, but I'm going to leave that for those who can speak in more detail about that. My task is to show you how can it be paid for without raising taxes. That's what I want to do now. So the developers proposed the project, and we call them phases. Where's Katie? Is she's back here? There's, you're on the front row. Okay. So Katie, did you refer to these as phases or your first release, or did you talk about that in those-
Basically, it was the phases.
Okay. So the, what we'll call the, the phase, the first phase of the project is, as we understand it at this time, is that there would be one multi-tenant facility, a building, it'd be multi-story building, would have commercial retail on the first floor and apartments on the second or third floors. And that would essentially be located at the corner of Prospect and Samuel. Right? That would be the first building that would be of the alley. Okay, so it's back. Yep. So that would be the first building that is proposed to be constructed. That building, you'll see on the spreadsheet here down in the left-hand corner, has a projected market value of $3.5 million. All right? Which may be conservative, depending on the final layout and design of that, of that structure. But this is the, the minimum that we're anticipating. Then, within Phase 1, which we're identifying as those structures that would likely be constructed within, you know, the calendar year 2018 or very shortly thereafter, would also include at least seven of these townhomes that have been proposed. And we're assuming a minimum market value of those of $300,000 for each one. So one multi-tenant, seven townhomes, hopefully constructed, completed within calendar year 2018, if not shortly thereafter. The, if you look then at the top of the spreadsheet on the projection, you'll see that of those structures that are constructed in 2018, if they're constructed in 2018, they'll be assessed for 2019, the first real estate tax that would be available for, that would be generated from that new development would be received by the village in the year 2020. All right? So go to column 2020, year 2020, if you will. We'll kind of run down one year here and you'll understand the flow. If the, as a result of the seven structures that I just described are completed, the first year real estate tax increment from that first phase of development would amount to $160,805 of real estate tax increment, assuming today's tax rate, the tax year 2016 payable 2017 real estate tax rate. Working your way down that column for the year 2020, you'll see that the, that's the total real estate tax increment for that year. The next row then relates to the anticipated intergovernmental agreement that the village will approve and execute with the Puriah Heights Community Unit School District 325. Right? And a, there is a small amount of proportionate administrative costs included in that. And that, for that first year, amounts to $40,201. That breaks down very easily by the terms of the intergovernmental agreement would provide a flat 21% of the gross increment back to the school district. And then there's a little bit of administrative costs that we've anticipated. And we do this because we want to get to a net real estate tax increment after the school district's been taken care of and after the, a portion of the village's administrative costs for maintaining the TIF district, because we believe that it's important that each project that benefits from the TIF district pays some proportionate amount of the responsibility for maintaining the TIF. If they're going to benefit from it, then they should all, we should all share, the village and the developers should share in that obligation. So that's why that's pulled off out of the gross. So the school gets paid off the top, essentially. And you get to then the net, it says RETI, it's Real Estate Tax Increment. And that real estate, net real estate tax increment is $120,604 in year 2020. What we've done then is we've looked at, because we're, you're a registered municipal advisor, we can run then some projections for financing the $1.3 million of public infrastructure. And if we assume for this discussion that at the proper time, and I'll come back to that in a moment, at the proper time when the village would issue these bonds, let's say, it could be a bank loan, what more likely would be bonds that you, the village would issue for the $1.3 million of public improvements. Then we want to look at, over the life of the TIF district or over the term of a 20-year bond term, what would be the annual debt requirement, debt service requirement that the village would be responsible for paying, and what would be the source of that money? So if in 2020, we have $120,000 of net real estate tax increment available, what we've done then is we've created custom, a custom, customized payment schedule, an amortization schedule, that begins with a payment of $68,916 in year 2020 for debt service. Okay? And then each year, each successive year, you'll see that amount goes up. And the reason it goes up is that in successive years, we've had more development occur, and your amount of real estate tax increment that's available will be increasing. So as you have more money available, you'll be able to pay more towards the bonds. And we stretch that out over 20 years so that the pace at which you repay the debt is keeping pace with the amount of real estate tax increment that will be generated from the multi-phase development that has been proposed. But it's critical that the first few years, we know that the Phase 1 of the project, the seven, first seven buildings that are going to be built, will be sufficient to carry the debt load, right, with some additional coverage. We want to make sure you're bringing in more money than you need from the TIF in order to make the debt service each year. So in year 2020, you'll see that you have $120,000 of net real estate tax increment, and the bond payment would be $68,916, which means that you have essentially 175% revenue to debt coverage. So you've got 75% more money than what you need in order to make that bond payment. All right? Now let me stop for a second. Everybody okay with that? You understand what I'm talking about? The debt service coverage is important because depending on the types of bonds that you might issue, and if you're issuing what's referred to as alternate revenue bonds, where you're relying on the incremental, TIF increment that's available each year for the debt service, then by law, you're required to have at minimum 125% debt service coverage. In this first year, there would be 175% coverage. So that's, that's a good number. That's a positive number. It's even better because if only the multi-tenant building were constructed, it alone, at the values that we have here, would provide 150% of the debt service coverage that you need. All right? I'm going to come back to that again here in a moment. So under 2020, you get down to where you have the $120,000 net increment, off comes the bond payment then for $68,916. Then the net real estate tax increment available at that point is $51,687. Everybody see that, where I'm at? From this point then, on an annual basis, after the school has been covered, the administration's been covered, after the bond payment has been covered, if there is residual increment left, the developer has over $6 million of other TIF-eligible project costs. And what the proposal is, is that on an annual basis, on a pay-as-you-go basis, that residual net increment, increment that's left after all of the obligations, other obligations have been paid, would be divided between the village and the developer on an annual basis until the developer is either repaid or the TIF ends, whichever occurs first. All right? So in this fir-
I have a question on that.
Yes.
So if, when you say the developer would get paid, what are they, what are they paying? I mean, aren't, aren't they, isn't the houses going to be bought and then you're going to develop? So what, what fee do, does the developer have?
There's site preparation, there's demolition of the old structures.
And wouldn't that be in the cost of the new home that she, that the person is going to buy?
Those costs all have to be incurred in order to prepare the site, to get the site ready for somebody to buy.
Right. She has, she's bought the, correct me if I'm wrong, but you buy the home, that's the project. You're buying the homes, and I don't want to say project, because I know I get everything flustered. You're buying your, your development. You're, you're going to purchase that home, only will you purchase it. Now, you're going to leave it up until you have a buyer on your pre-list or whatever, pre-sell list. That buyer is going to get pre-approved loans. And that $300,000 cost that you're saving, is that just for them to build the home? That isn't the cost to purchase that lot and your fees? I, I, I'm-
You want to address that, or I?
I'm having a thought here of a typical person going to buy a home and a lot, that that's their cost. That's their cost to tear it down and build a new. But what I think I'm hearing you say is, the developer has purchased the home, and now they're coming back to the TIF project to incur that cost of tearing that building down, that home down, and then the buyer is just going to have to buy an empty lot, I guess, or, and put a new home in?
Let me give you the short answer I think that is correct, and then Katie, you can add to it. From the analysis that we've, we've done so far, from the material that we've been provided, it appears that the, the per-lot development cost, the cost of developing each of these residential lots is somewhere around $80,000 to $90,000 each. Okay? Now, if you incur those costs without any ability to recover or recoup any of these TIF-eligible expenses, rather than it being a $300,000 townhome, what would the price of the townhome be, approximately? Do you have an idea of what that would be?
It would be $1,400.
Yeah. So the idea is that by the village using the developer's real estate, a portion of the real estate tax increment that's generated from this new project to further reimburse the site, development costs of the sites, we're keeping the price of the homes lower for people to be able to buy them. Because without that type of reimbursement, the costs of these new houses are going to be $400,000, $500,000 and up, depending on the design or features of what each individual may want. Right? So we're trying, we're trying to be able to let the, the money that's generated by the new buildings that are built, to some extent, be recirculated back into the property to bring the cost of developing the sites lower, so it ultimately makes the houses available at a lower price point than they would be otherwise.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm hearing you right. So the developer is going to, let's just say for now, the developer is going to put up the money for that property to get it prepared to sell-
Yes.
-for a home. And the homeowner, the new homeowner that is going to buy that lot and build a home, is not going to be charged what she did to prepare that lot?
Would not be charged the full value of the lot, of the cost of developing the lot.
Hearing that right. Okay, I just want to make sure that it's all out there that-
Right. That's the whole idea because-
She's coming back to us to, or, not she, but the developer's coming back to us to ask for the money, which she's charging the, the homeowners. I want to make sure that that's, that that's not going to be-
I think what typically happens though, in not just this case, but in most residential developments similar to this, is that what the homeowner is buying, for the most part, is house. They're not buying lots. Right? They're, they're really, the $300,000 is really house. The value there is mostly the home, not, not the ground underneath it. So the hot, if, if they're buying-
On this particular deal?
Yeah, but, but that's how, using TIF for most any residential project, that's why they use it, is so that they can get the cost of the land down for the ultimate homebuyer, who can put more money into the house rather than having to spend more for the, for the dirt, for the land. That's, that's really-
I just want to make it known that that's what's managed. The developer isn't going to be dealt with.
Yeah, something else you want to-
Yeah, and, and also to the point is, one of the, the changes that we made in order to fit with the houses that are not selling for that 30-foot line, the 25-foot lot, lot line, we're going to get more houses and keep the price down lower. However, that has other effects as well. So that's a point to it as well.
Okay. All right. We're going to get through this first year pretty quick here. All right? So still on column 2020. You come down to where it says then you've got the $51,687 of net increment after all the obligation, other obligations have been paid. The proposal here is that for the first five years, the residual increment, we'll call it the net-net increment, would be divided between the village and the developer at a rate of the developer receiving 80% of the net bottom-line net increment, and the village would keep 20% of that. Except that in the first year, year 2020, you'll see that the developer's share is $20,850, which is not 80% of the net increment. It's actually lower because we're holding dollars back, about $20,500, up to that amount, to help pay for the establishment of the TIF district. Because you'll recall that Mr. Herman had participated with the village in helping to fund the cost of the TIF district. And so you have a contractual obligation out of the first increment that's generated to see that he gets repaid for those, for those costs that he has helped provide, so that this hasn't cost the village anything, basically, to do the whole project. So these two projects, Duryea and Samuel, have come along prior to when you've established the TIF district. And again, it seems only appropriate that we would factor in some allowance for the Samuel Avenue project to contribute towards the repayment- allowance for the Samuel Avenue project to contribute towards the repayment of this. Now, part of that $20,000 holdback also includes the cost of $4,500 that we had told you was approximately what the cost of the housing impact study would be. And the housing impact study feasibility report is included in the TIF redevelopment plan. And just as a quick aside, the housing impact study was conducted because even though the, all of these townhomes are not going to be built at one time, we approached the TIF redevelopment plan as if they were going to be. And if that was all going to happen pretty quickly, the act requires that if there are 10 or more inhabited residential units that would either be replaced or displaced because of the project, then it's advisable for the village to do this housing impact study. And the essence of the housing impact study is that we look at the area to see to what extent there are alternatives for folks who would be vacating a residence on Samuel Avenue for finding similar or comparable housing within the TIF district, or within Peoria Heights, and then certainly within the, the Peoria area. And we've documented the availability of those alternative housing choices that were available when we did the study, at least this, this fall. And as part of that then, the village can provide some resources to help folks find other housing choices or alternatives, if that were to come to pass. Okay? So we've taken the extra effort here, because of this project, to make sure that we understand what those choices are, and that there is an availability, and that someone who may need to leave their home on Samuel Avenue, if there isn't another choice on Samuel Avenue, that there's another choice within Peoria Heights. And we tried to document that in the plan. Okay? Quick aside there.
I, I think that's a very important point to note, that your board does not want anyone leaving Peoria Heights. We are hoping to increase population, and by attracting potential new residents, anyone displaced by this project, who may be renting a property or selling a property, that the village is committed to working with them to find them other areas in Peoria Heights to live.
So, you can see the relative division then, of the developer and the village shares. It goes along here, but you'll want to note that the reimbursement terms on the pay-as-you-go portion of this change. So it begins at 80% of the net increment for the first five years, is what would be paid or reimbursed to the developer for their costs, other costs. Then after the first five years, that percentage drops to 75%, and the village keeps 25%. Until the developer has recovered or recaptured a total, or cumulative total of 3.5 million dollars, of their total 6 million dollars of estimated expenses. Okay, so, starts out at 80 for five years, once the five years is over, then it goes to 75% until the developer has recovered 3.5 million. And then assuming they, they are reimbursed, that they get to the 3.5 million before the TIF ends, then the reimbursement drops to 50%, and the village keeps half, the developer would get half. And what you'll see here, if you follow the projection all the way around to the end of the life of the TIF district, if only this first phase is completed, these first seven buildings, the, the most that the developer would be able to recapture at these values and at these tax rates that we're assuming, is 2.7 million. Right? That's over the 23-year life of the TIF district. And when the TIF ends, contracts end, they don't get anything more. Right? But if during the life of the TIF district, they proceed to do Phase 2, or Phase 3, and Phase 4, and they build more townhomes, whenever they kick in, when they're built and they're assessed, and then they start generating the increment, then they'll increase the amount of available increment for the debt service, and for the schools, and to divide between the developer and the, and the village. So the more they do, the more everybody stands to be able to recover and gain. But it's all based on providing an incentive for your group to, to do more. And so you have every reason to not stop with the first seven structures. You would want to try to do more if there are sites available. Right? And again, as another aside, this is all based on voluntary land acquisition, site acquisition. Nobody's being forced to sell, nobody's being forced out of their homes. So if the sites become available, and they're able to develop more, everybody will benefit. No taxes are having to be assessed or raised on anybody, other than the taxes that are generated from the new developments.
I, I think that's another important point to make, that this project is driven by the owner of the property deciding to sell. If any owner doesn't choose to sell, then there will be-
Absolutely. Well, I say absolutely, I'm not the developer, is that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Absolutely. You have no question?
And the benefit that they would get by remaining in their home is brand-new streets, lights, sidewalks-
That's right.
-or water, so-
For, at no additional cost.
To them.
To them. That's right.
So, thank you. I think you really answered a lot of questions that I had, and the most important one is, what of the increased bounty percentage, like what, what actual amount, and I think you said 20 and 25% does the village actually get to participate with?
Right.
And this is, this is what I wanted, two months ago, one month ago, a lot of them.
We didn't have hard numbers then, Alexa.
Let me, let me, let me share with you that we didn't have these numbers till, we didn't have these numbers to work with until this week. All right?
That's it, that's the key.
And so we're-
That's why we were bringing this forward to you tonight. I mean, Peoria Heights wants to be business-friendly, but this agreement should be scrutinized by the public and the board, and, and it will be. And I'd ask everyone to please keep in mind, and put out of your mind, a lot of us have read about other TIFs and other communities, not always done well, where the schools have not been made whole, where risk to the taxpayers has not been minimized. We're making every effort here to partner with the schools and to make sure that they are okay, because they are the foundation and the bedrock of our community, but also that any risk to the taxpayers is minimized. So scrutinize this, this potential agreement, ask all the questions you want, but try and focus on this agreement, because I do believe very strongly that Peoria Heights has done a, a pretty darn good job in the TIFs that have been implemented so far. You don't have to drive very far to see all of the development occurring in Peoria Heights. So, Mr. Klein, if you are ready for questions, we'll take questions, and if anyone wants to speak for or against the agreement, that will come next. So if you have an opinion you want to express, you can do that next, but right now-
I'm not finished yet, if I may.
You have another-
I got two more, two more important things I need to cover.
I'm trying to rush it really fast.
You're getting the quick version. Right? Okay. So, is it Alexi, is that your name? Okay. So, I just, Alexis, right?
Yeah, that's my Alexis.
All right. I want to come back to the last point we were making though, about the village's share of this. Right? So at the percentages we were just talking about, and if only the first phase is completed, the cumulative amount that would be available to the village, if nothing more gets built, after all the obligations are paid, is just under a million dollars. All right? About $905,000. And that $905,000 then, can be used anywhere within the TIF area. And when we come back for the public hearing on the 6th of February, we'll speak more about the other kinds of things that the village intends to do with the TIF district. But some of that could be other road improvements, other sidewalks, could be other public infrastructure, it could be commercial or other neighborhood residential type of redevelopment that could be supported from this money that's being generated from this one single project. Right? So that, that's a way for the village then, you'll be able to use this money in a much broader geographic area, because it can be used anywhere within the, the TIF boundary. The, the last thing that I wanted to cover with you is that the, the bonds, then if we assume they were 20-year bonds, they'd be paid off in 2038, if these bonds were issued in the first part of 2019. Now, here's where the redevelopment, or the pre-development agreement, isn't finished yet, because we need to work through some timing issues. And the timing issues relate to, when is the buildings going to be constructed? What are they going to assess for? When will we know how much they're going to assess for? And when will both the village and the developer have confidence enough to want to move forward and recommend that the bonds be issued? Right? So we need, we need a way to either trigger that, and/or if we issue those bonds, to protect the village, so that we don't get caught short not having enough money to make our debt service when those payments come due. So, the numbers, the projections that we've looked at at this point would suggest that if the Phase 1 development is completed in 2018, it'll have its first assessment on January 1 of 2019, but that assessment won't be finalized for another year. Right? Until they're preparing the bills for the 19 payable 2020 tax bills. So we may have a good idea of what the assessment will be, but nothing's a sure thing until those tax bills come out and we see it. All right? So what we need to do is, we need to think about, how can we put a backstop on the, such a bond issuance, to make sure that the village is not at risk? And you will recall that one of the devices that we used for the Tresters Bakery project, right, was a combination of this pay-as-you-go reimbursement, but you issued bonds that were backed by a special service area, an SSA. And so what we're suggesting in this case, for this project, is that that multi, that first multi-family, not multi-family, multi-tenant, commercial residential building that will be constructed, it alone would generate enough increment to begin making the bond payments. But what we want to do is, we will overlay that particular property of that site, for that building, with a special service area that also then includes all of the right-ofways for the Samuel Avenue, the lateral streets and the alleys, where the public infrastructure's going to be undertaken, that would be paid for with the bonds that are issued on monies pledged from the increment from this project. All right? You with me? And by doing this, what we would, what we need to work through is the timing of when that increment would become available, and what we would reasonably expect to need to do is probably capitalize the first year of interest on those bonds, within the bonds, so that when you issue the bonds, there'll be bond proceeds available to make the first year debt service, while the project is being completed and it's assessed, and then it is able to generate taxes.
We did two years on the Tresters.
We did two years on Tresters, this is one year. Every year of capitalized interest that you include in the bond just increases the cost of the project. Right? So, we're going to, we're going to take the developer on their, take them up on their expectation, if you will, that they're going to have the first phase done in 2018, but we'll create this special service area in advance of the first increment being available. So it'll be in place, and we'll be able to get ahead. The idea is that we want to be, if we can, a year ahead on your monies that you have available for your debt service. And we can do this with, in part with the SSA, as well as if at any time during the life of the term of the bonds, there is a shortfall, there isn't enough increment. What if a couple of houses burn down? God forbid. Or the multi-tenant building is damaged or their assessment declines, and it reduces the amount of increment available to make your debt service. Then the village has the ability to levy a tax on that property, so the developer would have to make up the shortfall.
Do we adjust on that property, not the whole building?
We do it on the property, we would do it, we would also include in the area that would be the beneficiary of the SSA. So at, at least that one property. The reason we don't want to include all the townhome properties in the SSA, is that how many people want to buy a lot to build a house on, knowing that at any time in the next 20 years, there might be an additional property tax on your house? Right? So it makes it very difficult to sell residential lots, if it has an SSA hanging out there that the homeowner would never know, they would have no control over whether there would be an additional tax that they hadn't anticipated. But it is more likely that the developer's going to continue to own the multi-tenant building because it's a rental unit. It's an investment property, and they're going to continue to own it. That property then would be responsible for making up the shortfall. That's, that's currently the concept that's reflected somewhat in the draft agreement that you have, but we have not worked out all the details of that, so that's why you'll see some yellow highlighting and typos and things we have to continue to work on tomorrow, provided you tell us to move forward. So, there.
So how much of a difference in price would it make to make it two years like we did with Tresters?
We can look at that. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't, I didn't bring that tonight, but I can tell you that it'd probably be about another $100, $120,000.
Are you ready for questions, Mr. Klein?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Anyone in the audience have a question for Mr. Klein, on this proposed agreement?
On the school district, what's the positive impact in the school district over the last year?
Superintendent Heath is here, maybe he would be more apt to want to answer that question. I don't want to speak for the school board. Do you want to?
Doctor Heath, welcome.
I'll take a shot at it, but-
Well, is he, is he talking about the financial aspect? You have that number. You have that number in your spreadsheet.
Here's the TIF score, so there's a base that we're able to levy tax on that property at those times. So, in lockheed, we easily created TIF, school districts lock it out of coal. Mayor Fain, we, we work right away, try to figure out a way that in the future, as the growth happens, the school districts, you know, somewhat protected and not lost all that revenue. We've had static EAV in this community for three years. That's, that's a hit. The school district weren't able to see the growth of revenue. The school district, I mentioned that the state's doing, so they came up with a number. In the previous two TIFs, we had a percentage that we were getting, basically, not the full, it's about 56% of the tax, but almost goes to the school districts. And so, we're not giving all of that on the increased revenues in those TIFs, it was about, it's about 20%. On this deal, on this TIF, it would be about 20% of the increased increment per. So that's the financial, you know, it's not a total that this is growth, it may not happen without that, I understand that. So, I'm supportive of the TIF, of the TIF, because I, I'm supportive of growth, because we need it. You know, whatever projects that can be taken off for those Tresters, this one, or whatever. So, as a school district, I hope that it really gets all the way, I think that will be an age of something. I don't know about the residential impact in our school district. I, I don't know that. And I, no one knows that, so I'm not going to, I don't know how that turns out. I know the $300,000 homes, that's for our school district here. I know that that's higher level. Right now, in the street, that does not help our school district at all. So if we can change higher level impact to homeownership, that's a positive for our school district.
The, the final agreement was actually 21%. And so, again, going back to the fundamental concept of TIF here, you have to keep in mind that 21% of something is worth a lot more than 100% of nothing. And so without the TIF district, we have documented in the TIF plan, the developer has attested to the fact that they would not be undertaking this project, but for the availability of the public infrastructure work and the reimbursement of other costs that could be made possible through the TIF. So if- So if this growth doesn't occur, there's nothing for anyone to share. There's no growth from this project, so the project won't happen. So if we can stimulate the project to happen and the school receives a portion of that, which in part is offset to from other sources, right? So you're not getting your full tax rate back, the school isn't, but some of that is offset from some other assistance that the, that the State of Illinois provides. And so the TIF is going a long way though in trying to help get the school as close as possible back to where it would be if this development occurred without a TIF district. Is it, is it completely there? No. But it's pretty darn close. Right? So that's, that's the benefit to the school.
Yeah, and I'd like to say too, I mean, a lot of times citizens have been somewhat vocal towards the village about focusing too much on commercial development, but we need the commercial development, as I said earlier, to help run the village, to pay the bills. But the bedrock of the community are the people who live here and our schools. And this is why I'm excited that there is an interest of people moving back to Peoria Heights and increasing our population. And this is really what we need to do. And I can assure you, you know, Dr. Heath and I talk regularly, we want to partner with the schools and make the schools a full partner in everything we do here and have them at the table. We're not always going to agree, but we certainly agree that we have to focus on improving and stabilizing our neighborhoods and that's very important to all of us.
And I guess the final note I would throw on that too is that one of the major selling points of any community that's trying to attract new families or keep the families you have here is to have a healthy school district. And so in the TIF plan, we've made it pretty clear, abundantly clear, I believe, that it's important for this collaboration to occur because residential development, generating additional students, that will help further the enrollments at the school as well as provide a larger tax base for the school and other taxing bodies to levy against in the future is really the goal. Okay? Do you have other questions or?
First of all, I just applaud, because we've read about a lot of TIFs that have gone on Peoria Heights, that the hotel things are based on, I think, central awareness of things. So I think that you're including the school and some of the things you're doing, it's really important because I think they're kind of hand in hand. You can't increase for all families if we don't have a strong school and school doesn't need, without the strong families. So I think it's important that if we're doing this and it's an investment and the community's making it as well, is that we make sure we are attracting, we've got a price point that's going to attract families that are going to come in, that are going to go to the school and make it stronger. And then the other question I have, I just want to make sure I understand the numbers. And I think this might go back to the electrician's point. He said that the, the EAV hasn't gone up. And I think for many residents, the EAV has gone up, theirs has gone up. And so there's some disparity. So in this group, so this, this section of homes that's going to be developed, that when you were talking about the increment, you're basically freezing whatever they're paying right now and?
No.
No? I mean, when I say freezing, you're using that as your baseline to?
What is held constant over the life of the TIF district for the purposes of making sure the other taxing bodies continue to receive funds is the portion of the assessed value that existed on the property prior to when the TIF district was created. All right? So after the TIF is created and then there's an increase in assessed value, there's a base map there that the county will continue to collect taxes on and distribute to the school and the county and all the taxing bodies that are listed on your tax bill. When you get your tax bill, if you're in the TIF district, you'll have a line on there. It'll say something like, "Peoria Heights, TIF District Number 3." And you read it across, you should see that there is one tax rate because it's not a taxing district. All TIF does is reallocate a portion of your total tax bill. Right? So it doesn't freeze your taxes. What it does is it helps constant the base assessment on that property when the TIF was created to make sure the other taxing bodies can continue to levy against what existed prior to the TIF.
And that's, I think, what I'm saying is you're freezing the base, let's say right now, to distribute to all the taxing bodies. And that's frozen for the life of the TIF?
Yes.
So there's, for that, in the life of the TIF is?
It's 23 years.
So for that 23 years, that would not increase, even though?
No, the assessment increases, but the base would.
The base is being allocated and not going back to the redevelopment.
That's correct.
That's, so that's what I'm saying. So for the rest of us living around it, ours, you know, ours isn't frozen for that. I know it's not, because what I'm saying is there is a difference there, I think, in terms of the rest of us will see an increase in equalized?
The only thing that can cause an increase in your tax bill, two things, is increasing your assessment. Right? So if you make an improvement on your property, the county will assess it higher. You know, sometimes they raise our taxes a little, they raise our assessments a little bit just for the habit of, right, for inflation or anything. Not very much. And they, the, you know, the school district is telling us that for the last three years, there's been no increase in their tax base, your assessed value that you levy against. Is that correct?
So the county, that EAV in Peoria Heights doesn't increase in three?
That's for the school.
That's for the entire.
That doesn't mean that your home didn't increase. It just means?
No, no, no. I mean, in, in general, I can tell you, we lived in our home for 30 years, our taxes have gone up 240%. And, and not changed in size or anything. So what, I guess what I'm saying is just that base that you're calling, so that those services that are getting, or those here, you know, the police, the fire, they're getting, what's that, that's the park district, that's everyone else, they're getting a piece of that. That component is frozen for the life of the TIF. So they're not going to see an increase for those people in that base for the life of the TIF.
Short of an intergovernmental agreement like the school has, that's correct. They don't get an automatic benefit. The, the village has the authority and it will be included in the plan, however, that at any point during the life of the TIF district, if a taxing body, and the library was at our, during a review board meeting we had yesterday, which by the way, the board approved the plan for moving forward. And the library said, well, if, if you have residential development and it causes an increase in the number of traffic of people coming into the library, or we need to buy another computer at some point, is there some way for the village to help us with that? And there is, because that's written into the plan, that if, if another taxing district demonstrates that they have experienced some impact as a result of the TIF projects, the village board would have to approve it. But they could, if there's money available, they could help my computers or assist with other capital approvals to the library or assist in other taxing districts. So they're not, they're not shut out completely, it's just not an automatic thing.
So the village extends, because our village does get a very small percentage of the tax for the village district. So if they're seeing they have more demands because of the influx of people moving their vacant, 100%?
The village?
Yeah.
The village will control 100% of the income of the new money that comes in, comes into the TIF fund, first of all. Right? So they will control that, those funds and after the obligations have been paid, they'll have money left over that they could use for additional improvements and other services and things they're driving. But what, what the success of the TIF districts actually do, because one of the TIF districts is down on former Memorial Drive. Right? And then the other, the other two that they currently have now are Bakery 4500, North Prospect, Williams Brothers Property, the work servants is at now, those are all in the TIF area. But when the TIF district is successful and the village has money to use for TIF eligible expenses within the TIF areas, it frees up money out of your general fund that you can use in non-TIF areas that wouldn't otherwise have been available to. So indirectly, other areas will also benefit while the TIF district is doing its thing. Right? While it's paying for these projects and the infrastructure, while that's all going on, it can to some extent yield some assistance to non-TIF areas indirectly because it frees up other dollars that otherwise would have been spent within the TIF areas.
Okay, who else? Anyone else? Yes.
I have a question, and I'm sure you answered this, but just because I think this might be semantic. Can you clarify the, so after the new property is assessed, the new, like, start with Phase 1, the difference in what the expenditure was and the money coming back, is that a clean distribution of 80% to the developer and 20% to the city for the first five years and then 75% and?
Fifty later.
Yeah, later. Or are there any other, I mean, it's just those two entities are?
Those are the only parties to the redevelopment agreement.
Okay.
And the, yes, so the residual net-net increment would be divided between the, only the developer and the village at that point.
And that was, for example, the developer, you said the, I don't know if I, how was 3.5, until the 3.5 million dollars that's to be spent?
80%, of the net-net goes back for the first five years. Then until the developer has recovered 3.5 million, it, it falls to 75% until that point. And then for any dollars recovered after 3.5 million, it's a 50/50 division of the, of the increment. And the only way they'll ever get there is to build a lot more.
Yeah. I was just trying to do the next one.
You got it.
Not knowing the price of what the current homes are being purchased for and then not knowing the price of what the new homes are really being sold for. I think you said 300,000 of the townhomes.
That's the current estimate, but see, the, again, there's no risk to the village here because the developer only gets back a percentage of what they generate.
Okay.
So if they build less house, they won't get as much back each year. If they build more house, then they'll be able to recover their dollars more quickly and there'll be more money available for the village. The only time the village really has to be careful is on the residual increment that you have at the very end here, each year that you have that's uncommitted to this project. You'd want to make sure that you don't overextend yourself on that and pledge it towards something that you would be relying on that for, for a debt service or some other hard commitment that if in the event the values were to decline, you know, that money might be needed for something else rather than what you've got to commit it for. So you don't want to overextend yourself on your share of the pay-as-you-go amounts that you would receive each year. That's part of what we try to help you watch for.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Rick?
So the 3.5 million is a cap amount?
It's a cap amount.
A cap amount?
Yeah.
And then it goes to 50/50?
Goes 50/50 and then the final cap amount is 6.3 million. Over the life of the TIF district.
Right. And if it gets to 6.3 million?
If they give it to 6.3 million in the 18th year, for example, they don't get any more.
Rob, you have a question?
Could you say what the SSA tax rate was going to be?
I can't tell you. I don't know what it would be because usually the SSA is going to be set up for a dollar amount that would be levied each year. So, so let me tell you how we did it for the bakery, is that we calculated the debt service. There's an annual payment. And so the, the dollar amount that is automatically levied through the SSA every year is sufficient to make the bond payment. And what the village has to do then, every year when they set their levy, they also need to approve an abatement ordinance. So if there's enough money coming in, they don't need the SSA money, then they will approve an ordinance that abates that levy. It tells the county, you don't have to collect it. We don't need it each year. But the SSA otherwise is automatically levying that protection, that extra amount on whatever property is in that special service area unless the village abates it and says, "We don't need it." And the only time they would say, "We don't need it" is when we're assured that we have 125% plus debt service coverage.
So this is just a backstop plan?
It's a backstop. But we want to make sure that the street, the storm sewer, the sidewalks, the lighting, all that gets done. The only way it's going to get done here is if we issue the bonds. And we want to make sure the bonds get paid by the private sector, not by the public. So with the safeguard of the special service area, and there are other devices we could look at, but that's, seems to be one, after discussing it with Bond Council briefly, seems to be the most effective firewall, if you will, between the debt service and the general obligation of the village, is to make sure that the, the developer is assuming that risk, that there would be that additional tax every year unless their project is generating enough money to pay it. And if that's the case, then the village doesn't need it. They approve an abatement ordinance, they're already doing that every year for the?
Could you repeat the question? I didn't hear the question.
His question had to do with the amount of the special service area tax. Do we know what the rate of the SSA tax would be? And I said, "We don't know what the rate would be," because it's set on a dollar amount each year.
The current one is 1%? Is that?
Well, it's, it's about $180,000 is what the SSA is set at for the debt service on the 1.8, what was it?
1.85.
The 1.85 million dollars of bonds that were issued on the Bakery project is backed by a special service area that levies $180,000 on that property every year unless it's abated by the village.
Did you say you were only going to do it on the portion?
Yes. Yes. On the portion of the first phase that's generating the majority of the, of the exhibit.
Rick, did you have a follow-up?
I just, that SSA is strictly a property tax percent?
In this instance, it's only property tax. No. No.
Would that buy about six or so homes that would be built? No. Is there a way to phase the, the future of the development subsequent, that over time it will materialize? Does all the infrastructure have to be done on the front end? Is there a way to phase in the infrastructure to match?
I'm not the right guy to ask, answer that question, but it could certainly be phased in. The, huh? Why, you want to address that?
Yeah, we have an abating it in, so we can do like half lot, half lot. The problem comes with the economy of scale. So this storm and water and sewer having all of the vulnerability of the way we can leave that pipeline one stretch, you have an economy of scale and the price becomes overall, plus expensive. That was something we were looking at. The other thing too is to have that whole lot, that perception change. We have a lot of people, you know, that have told us that we're leaving a lot of the weeds because of that 1930 or 1940, early because of the city. And so having that lot change and that perception change with the street improvements and something like that helps then, the people in fact of having worked up so they have it.
You have people that are interested in having, like, in your prospect, but some of them, are they spread out in your interest as far as, are they going to be at home?
Absolutely. Yeah. And they would pick, you know, where they want to go as well. So, but, I mean, we have stratus of the town in Peoria Heights, business extension and stuff like that. They need to kind of do it for a fiber, in that line, because there's already fiber running along there. So those ones could have, you know, fiber for those, I mean, and, you know, they're doing that over there to, to, for us, you know? And so that was the economy of scale. I mean, that, that was part of possibly triggering the, the cost, you know, until, you know, more at this point now, because, you know, you have to get so much fire and we were to build a project for a period. And, and alleys, you know, I even looked at, said, "I don't need the little bees that go out and go as dirty for our access," but that kind of basis started to finish the spot. And so we really spent a lot of time looking at those improvements that would be there. And again, it's $1.3 million of infrastructure improvements that the village doesn't do that currently would at some point in time, not immediately, but they would. You know, and improving those alleys, and I'd say now, including Plancing, you know, we're constantly bringing out our stormer or sewer because we're serving the old, the high危. So that, to be able to put new houses here and there, it would be something that, and help.
If they issue, if they issue all revenue bonds, for example, for the full amount, then we encourage all that work to be done within, say, within a three-year period. So it doesn't have to be done all in the first six months. It could be phased out, but it wouldn't be three years. wouldn't be three years. It could be, you know, as it needs to be done or would make sense to do it. And I'm not, I'm not the planner or the public works person to be able to answer those types of questions, but there's some flexibility there.
Okay, any other follow-up questions? Since the bakery was mentioned, I see the hubnairs in the audience want to call you out and congratulate you on a fine project and thank you for your investment in the community. Brought a great business, added to the quality of life, brought a lot of jobs here and we're happy to have you here. So congratulations, Jeff and Martha. Any last questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question for Danny here. What about people who choose to stay in their homes both ends? It's not, I mean, you rip up the streets, you rip up five blocks, how is there any impact there? I mean, it's going to be pretty ugly for them, I would say.
Just like any construction, I think putting five hundred doors would happen here, that is definitely, it's the greater of the outcomes because of the alley and the townhouse. And so we talked a lot about the timing of these repairs and, and that's the pressure, but anytime a street happens, I guess, there's enough to it about it. And if construction is, you have that pressure, there's a hundred, I think those are definitely inconveniences. But again, there's streets that at some point in time, everyone will be repaired. And so it would be the same inconvenience at that point in time as it would be at this point in time.
Does that answer your question, Chief?
Every new street, every new sidewalk, lights, utilities under it, and the alleys will be removed, so.
Okay. All right, I'm going to ask Mr. Fick if he would, or Steve, to take us through what the next steps would be. And then we'll take any public comment. I can give a shot, Steve, you can backfill for me. So I know our next meeting to talk about the T I F is, there's a public hearing on February sixth at six o'clock, I believe, same location. And then on February twentieth is when we actually vote to adopt the ordinance to establish T I F district number three. So that's when, you know, it officially gets set up. And after it's set up, we can continue moving forward with actual redevelopment agreements. So right now, this is a pre-development agreement that we're working on with Ms. Kim. This just allows her to kind of move forward with some of her financing and things like that. That would be, along with Mr. Herman's agreement, those will be, both be converted over into, you know, permanent redevelopment agreements at some time after T I F three is established. And I'm not sure what that timeframe might be, but relatively quickly, I'd imagine.
It could be the same, though.
So we are open for public comment. If anyone would like to express an opinion for or against, if you would keep your remarks to under five minutes and keep it relevant to the topic and state your name, anyone's welcome to come up. So we're open for public comment. Danny, come forward if you would please and give your name and, I think we all know you, but for the record?
For the record, my name is Dan Cranford and I live in eleven oh eight East Seiwa. We have, me and my wife have lived there for thirty-five years. And the only comment, I'm not much of a speaker, but the only comment that I have is, since we've lived here, I've lived here for my whole life, sixty-two years, but for the last thirty-five years, I have been, I have been saying and wanting improvements in our neighborhood. And I haven't seen a whole lot of interest in that until this, which I think is going to improve this village. I don't know the specifics on T I Fs, I'm not a genius, but I've always said that if we can, if we can have homeowners in the neighborhoods, it's way better than having rental property, in my opinion. And this is a start. I mean, this is just, this could just be a start. I'm hoping it's a start. I hope it spreads to my neighborhood. I hope it spreads to everybody's neighborhood, to tell you the truth. And that's really all I got to say. I think you guys are doing a good job.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, no problem. You too.
Anyone else? Any other public comment? Going once, going twice, public comments closed. Okay. We have one little bit of business to take care of before we adjourn. We would be, new business, ordinance two thousand eighteen dash fifteen thirty-seven, and ordinance of the village of Peoria Heights, Peoria County, Illinois, admitting its employee handbook for the purpose of updating its prohibition of sexual harassment. Trustee Diane Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen thirty-seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I do. Diane, would you please set this up?
I think we're going to let Mr. Tibbs give the information on this.
Go ahead, go ahead, counsel.
The Illinois General Assembly has resolved some of the issues with sexual harassment that have materialized over the last six or eight months, passed legislation, Public Act one hundred five five four, that requires units of local government to pass sexual harassment policies that contain a number of specific elements, including consequences of failing to report, consequences of making false reports, procedures for actually reporting, the actual consequences of engaging in the activity. All those things are required to be included in the sexual harassment policies adopted by all units of local government in Illinois. Upon a review of the current sexual harassment policy in the village handbook, you do already have a sexual harassment policy. It does not contain all those required elements. So this proposed ordinance would add modifications to the employee handbook to include all of those elements. And the reason it's being done tonight in part is because of the fact that the statute requires the adoption of the new policy within sixty days after the effective date of Public Act one hundred five five four. That was passed on November sixteen, so the new policy is required to be in place by January fifteen. So by acting on this ordinance this evening, the board will be in compliance with the requirements of the statute.
Thank you, counsel. Any discussion or questions for counsel? Ready for the question, medic clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hahn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Recker?
Aye.
And trustee Carter?
Aye.
All right, that passes, trustee Gett?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? We're adjourned.
I'm tired.